Session of the Planning Commission for the Pleasant Grove, City of Pleasant Grove. The mission meeting is now in order. Start off with, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Clyde and opening remarks by Commissioner Steele.
We all rise and repeat the pledge allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly father, we are grateful to join together today and to meet to discuss the affairs of the city. We ask you to bless us with clear minds and judgment as we address the issues before us. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
At this time, I'd look for an approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Fugel to approve tonight's agenda, a second by Commissioner Clyde. All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's move to the staff reports. Seeing we wanted to review and approve the staff reports from last meeting.
The staff reports for this meeting?
This meeting, sorry.
I move that we approve the staff reports.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Steele to approve the staff minutes and a second by Commissioner Fugel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass. Are there any declarations or conflicts of interest, absentations from commission members?
No.
Seeing none, we'll move on. We would like to start our first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing for a preliminary subdivision plat located at 2687 North Canyon Road, Manila Neighborhood. It is a public hearing to consider the request of Christian Barfus for a two lot preliminary subdivision plat called Parley's Way Plat A on 1.03 acres of land located at 2687 North Canyon Road in the rural residential zone. Turn the time over to Mr. Hawkins.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I'm Jacob Hawkins from the Community Development Department. This first item is for Parley's Way subdivision, which is a two lot subdivision located at approximately the corner of 2600 North and North Canyon Road. This property is designated as rural residential and is approximately 1.03 acres in size. This is the zoning map and with it is the aerial map, just to kind of show context of the surroundings. And then this is the proposed subdivision. The applicant wants to split this property down the middle to create a flag lot on one side that fronts onto 2600 North and a normal interior lot that fronts onto North Canyon Road. Both of these proposed lots meet the required standards for the lot size, width, frontage, and setback requirements, and so staff recommends approval of the proposed subdivision, and I can take any questions.
On the, on the stem road of the turnaround for the fire department?
Mm-hmm.
You've got that dotted line, is that just to make sure it's there because it require, it reaches the width all the way down on that lane?
Yes, sir.
It looks, it's supposed to have thirty foot front and rear setbacks, right?
Thirty foot front and rear setbacks, yes, sir.
So I, I believe it's showing twenty on the north. So that's something that should be corrected.
That's correct. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're talking just on Lot Two, right?
Yeah, on Lot Two. Because it's there, Lot One has the thirty foot. Yeah.
Are there any other questions or?
Just, so Jacob, really quick.
Yes, sir.
Talking about that, I know that when they do this twenty foot wide strip for a flag lot, you've got eighteen feet asphalt, couple of feet of, a foot on each side of the concrete. Is that, is that going to happen down that lane? Because it's just not specified in that. The emergency access.
Yeah, this lane is really just for the access. When they actually put in the driveway, that's twenty foot wide, as long as it's within that area, that should be.
So it's just a designation once you get up here to split the two lots? Do you have what it originally looked like before it was split? Was it just continued as one? Is that further out?
So going back to the aerial image, this is kind of what it looked like before.
Yeah, I gotcha.
And so where the property line is at, let me get this out, there is a line that's a little hard to see, that's right here, and so this line is pretty close to where the existing house is. And in order for them to be able to subdivide the property, they would have to meet the required rear setback for this lot. So they're going to be, they're proposing to remove this shed right here and then it, and then move this line over just a little bit, and then that way they'll be thirty feet away from that property line. And then they'll still have like a little jut out up here to make sure that they've got enough room for the area for Lot Two.
So if you go back to the site plan there, can you talk a little about the determination of front and back, how that was decided, which one would be front and back?
Yeah, absolutely. So whenever staff considers flag lots, there are sometimes flag lots that are long and skinny or really short and wide, and in order to give enough room for those flag lots to be buildable, staff chooses the side that would, you know, usually the most narrow side in order to have that as the front setback, and then therefore that would give enough room for there to be a appropriate building envelope. So for example, if this were the side setback and this were the front and rear setback, this whole side is ninety-four feet from like here to there. And so if you take thirty feet off from one side, thirty feet off from the other side, then you're left with like sixty feet down the middle from both of these ends, so that's not even including this area. So they'd have like a really narrow strip in order to build their house. Sometimes we would call those like shotgun houses or something like that, you know, it's very, it's hard to build in those kind of areas. And so instead, what we do is we consider both of these sides because they can't meet the frontage requirement because this is a flag lot. We consider both sides and they can meet the thirty foot here, they can meet the thirty foot here, and there's still ample room for them to actually have a full building envelope there. And so that's how we determine our, the setbacks for the flag lots. Hopefully that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any other questions for staff?
I don't.
Okay. Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
This is a public meeting, and we'd like to open this up for any public comment on this part that we're hearing. If you would like to comment, come up, please state your name for the record, and so we've got that and anything that you want to add.
Hi, Christian Barfus here. So this is my house and kind of property that I'm working on, and I was, just wanted to ask, and this may not be a question for you guys, but the kind of, the plans call for two sewer lines running down that long strip, and I'm wondering if it's possible to switch that over to like one six inch with a Y out for both properties kind of farther up where the, where it opens up? Or potentially, yeah, that, that's kind of my main question.
That would actually be something that would be with the staff.
Okay.
Or is there anything you would know about, Aaron?
Yeah, typically, sorry, Commissioner and Chair and Christian, we also typically with those particular things with flag lots and other things, we require those to have separate, separate utilities instead of a common like utility like that. And so that's what, I think we, I think we addressed that, maybe we just didn't explain it well enough to him in the, in the beginning, but I think it was originally, it was originally designed and presented to us as a single, you know, sewer system going up, and we had them change that to the, and I know this isn't the actual site plan, the site plan shows the separate utilities he's talking about, and, and, and we, maybe we just didn't do a good job explaining to you why, but that's just, just to, because they're, they're just completely separate, and so there's just an easement running down there for Lot One, where there, there will be for that sewer for Lot One, and then obviously Lot Two has its own sewer and its own property, so.
Awesome, thank you. I think my other questions would probably be more for the staff based on that one, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment on this motion that we're hearing?
I think we should just note the letter that came in.
And then to, to note, we did receive a letter from a neighbor that was submitted in lieu of being here. They talked about how they're, it is beneficial and they're excited to see the property, they're concerned about setbacks on another site that is not part of this hearing, but we did receive that letter from John and Joanna Norton, and we'd like to make sure that that letter is submitted in the staff reports as part of this, this hearing. Okay. Hearing no other public comment, let's bring it back up here to the commissioners. Are there any other discussions or are you ready to make motions?
I'm ready to make a motion. I, I think with, with regards to the letter, we'd maybe like to acknowledge the question of the setbacks and just note that as, as Jacob mentioned, we, we treat setbacks on flag lots differently from lots that are fronting on a public street. So I move the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation of approval for the request of Christian Barfus for a subdivision plat called Parley's Way Plat A, property located at approximately 2687 North Canyon Road and Zoned Rural Residential, adopting the exhibits, conditions, and findings of the staff report with the conditions that one, all final planning, engineering, and fire department requirements are met.
Peter, do you want to, do you want to add the twenty feet?
Yeah, and, and two, that the north setback on Lot Two be corrected to thirty feet.
Okay, I have a proposal from Commissioner Steele and a second from Commissioner Clyde. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that will pass. Okay, we'll move to item number two on the agenda. It is a public hearing for a preliminary subdivision plat located at 25 East 100 North in the Little Denmark Neighborhood to consider the request of Joe Spencer for a four lot preliminary subdivision plat called Pleasant Grove Downtown Living Plat A on 0.98 acres of land located approximately 25 East 100 North in the downtown village transitional zone. Mr. Hawkins?
Thank you. This is Pleasant Grove Downtown Living. This is a subdivision located at approximately 25 East 100 North and is in the downtown transition district. Here's the zoning map for it, shows that it's just outside of the commercial district for downtown. And here is the aerial map for context of the surroundings. It is right behind the John Hancock Charter School. The applicant is anticipating on developing these four lots with duplexes, and as such has labeled each of these lots as 1A, 1B, and so on. But each of these full lots are approximately 6,000 square feet in size, which meets the lot size requirements of the zone. Overall, the proposed subdivision meets the requirements of the zone, and staff recommends approval of the proposed plat. One last thing to mention as well, you may notice that the side setbacks for the building envelopes on this plat are a little bit narrow. You'll see, for example, right here, there's a five foot setback to those property lines, and that's something that the applicant is working with staff about, and at the time of the submittal for the site plans, we will have updated. We'll have correct versions for the setbacks for this property.
Okay, are there any questions for Jacob? Okay. Thank you.
I have one really quick.
Okay.
Explain just what will happen with parcel A, parcel B.
So like the Lot A, Lot, Lot 1A, Lot 1B sort of deal?
No, up at the top in the curve.
Oh, I see. Here in parcel B, they're going to have additional parking. As for parcel A, I believe that's going to be landscaping, but I'll let the applicant answer that a little bit more if he's here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing. Oh, sorry. The applicant here would like to make any remarks.
Ken Berg with Berg Civil Engineering. Parcel A and parcel B are, right now, they're placeholders that there's further opportunities to make further adjustments. Right now, it's planned to, you can see on the north end, it has the temporary fire hammerhead so that fire can do their traffic movements, and then the rest of the area initially is planned for just some improvements, local or playground grass area for the residents of, of this proposed development.
I probably should ask Jacob, but you'll probably know, does this connect into the other road? Or is it just ending right there? Like, does this go, is this a through stroke, street once this is done?
No. I mean, we've, we've worked with staff that it possibly could, but we don't own the property to the north, but it's laid out to make that, so.
And so you're going to make that as a hammerhead for flip around?
Yes.
Okay. And then in the future, you might be, might take that out once the road's in and do something different with it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So in the future, if something were to happen, it would be, you would get to see me again, and we would propose, you know, that parcel B and the adjoining parcel to the east might have a different subdivision, or parcel A and the, I think my eyes say Higbee, but it's the time of night where I can't see.
That would be.
You know, that might be developed into a building lot. It's, they're really just placeholders at this point.
So will these be individually owned or under some sort of HOA?
They'll be individually owned. I think at this point, you know, this is the preliminary plan, we will, those will be a future phase that will sort those things out, so.
And if I may clarify on that just a little bit, the site plan will be handled at a different time for the buildings that will be going onto these properties, and at that time, I believe, is a condominium plat may be applied for to help differentiate those.
So if you're putting a hammerhead in there and, and it's ending, and John Hancock owns that property next to it that's a parking lot, are you putting something there to stop it from being a straight through for when their kids are getting dropped off and picked Like, you're doing a hammerhead because you don't own the property, but is that basically connected in that lot? Because if you go back to the aerial, like John Hancock's basically using that as a parking lot, correct? Right now?
Yes, they actually have a dumpster down in that corner, if I remember right.
Yeah.
And a trailer in that corner.
Yeah. So I think it's, I, I think it's probably a little of both, you know, but for the public standards, you know, we just can't tell fire, hey, fire, you can just drive through John Hancock's parking lot.
No, I fully understand, I fully understand that. What I'm worried about is the road will be left open and that traffic will drive through that, which becomes an issue with the city. Like, like there will be have something that will have to stop that from happening.
Yeah.
Do you understand what I'm saying? Go ahead, Aaron.
Commissioner Clyde, we, we looked at this, I believe, pretty extensively in the, in the staff review of this, and we felt that because they're building it to a full width street, it's not like it's, it's not a narrower street or anything like that, that that traffic wouldn't, wouldn't be, you know, a big deal to that street because they do use it that way today, they already, you know, you can already see.
Drive through it.
They already drive through it. I mean, really what they're doing is they're, they're improving it because they're putting a street in, and then they're also, you know, improving the neighborhood and things like that because, you know, the homes are, are old and, and not in, not in good repair and other things like that. So they're really just kind of improving it, but like, like Ken said, in order to meet the requirements, the official requirements, they do need to put in that, that hammerhead turnaround so that there's an official easement and location for that until such time as the, the road is put, put all the way through to the north.
Okay. Do you have any issues with the setback being changed to ten feet from five on the side of Lot 1A, 1B? I guess it'd be really Lot 1B.
One more time for me, I'm sorry.
The setback being changed to the ten feet instead of the five feet?
Right. So the applicant is discussing with staff right now to determine whether it's appropriate to have a fifteen foot combined side setback, so five feet on one side, ten feet on the other. And so this subdivision plat reflects that. However, once again, whenever the applicant submits for the official site plan, the building setbacks will be met based on whatever the code is at that time.
Okay. Yeah, so we're, we're kind of giving you a peek into what your future code will look like, and this is how it's represented.
What future code might look like?
May look like, yes.
There you go.
Pardon my assumption. But your staff is recommending, let me put it that way.
Okay, are there any other questions or any other comments that we have for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, or is there any of the public that would like to comment on this proposal or hearing for the subdivision? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing for this portion. Bring it back up here to the commissions, is there any other discussions that you would like to have or make a proposal at this point?
I'll make a motion. I move the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation of approval for the request of Joe Spencer for a subdivision plat called Pleasant Grove Downtown Living Plat A on property located approximately 25 East 100 North on property zone downtown village transitional and adopting the exhibits, conditions, and findings of the staff report and is modified by all final planning, engineering, and fire department, or is modified by the conditions below that all final planning, engineering, and fire department requirements are met.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fugel. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hargit. All in the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to our next, which is site plan located at approximately 100 South Main Street in the Stringtown Neighborhood. Public hearing to consider the request of Tyler Hampton for an amendment to a commercial site plan located at approximately 800 South and Main Street in the manufacturing district zone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an amendments, this is an amended site plan for Cornerstone Concrete. Starting off, this is the zoning map. This property is zoned manufacturing district as well as much of the area surrounding it. And this is the aerial map. Let's load it in. And here you can see context of the surroundings, they have a lot of storage on their property based off of this map, which we have for our zoning map. Anyways, the applicant is anticipating on developing, oh, sorry, the applicant is requesting to put a new storage building behind the existing building here. This new one is highlighted in yellow there, and because the proposed building is so large, that's why they're here today. The applicant has submitted landscape plans that meet the zoning requirements, as you can see here. Apologies. And then here are the elevation plans that were submitted. It's a relatively short building at about eighteen feet tall, but it's a large, wide building as well. And then here are the materials and elevations for what it will look like. This will be a metal building, but it's also in a manufacturing distribution zone, and there aren't any design or material requirements there from zoning. So as long as they meet what's in the international building code, staff recommends approval of the proposed building.
Jacob?
Yes, sir.
Explain to me, maybe I'm just not following, why is this, why is the site plan needing to be redone?
So in our zoning ordinances, we have minor site plan amendments that staff can take care of administratively, and then there are major site plan amendments. And simply just because of the size of this building being nearly larger than the existing building, staff determined that this was a major site plan amendment and therefore needed to come in front of the board. That's really it.
Go ahead, Aaron.
The only thing I would, I, I think that was a great explanation, the only thing I would add is that because of the extra, so that where that existing, or the proposed building is, is currently all impervious area where the, which means that the water, rainwater, other things are going to just soak into the ground, and they're adding a building on that that's going to create impervious area. And so there, there's, there's other things like the drainage requirements, other things like that that need to be met that, that really rise it to the level of.
So it's more of a storm drain issue and some things like this, correct?
It creates a little bit of that, yes.
Because to me, I'm looking at, I'm like, has it's got the site plan, this should be at the building department, right?
It's pretty straightforward.
But you're talking about improving basically the horizontal.
Right.
Which is requiring it to come back here.
Right, yeah, just because it's a large one.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If the applicant is here, we'd like to invite them to come up and state anything you'd like to say again, please state your name for the record.
Tyler Hampton with Cornerstone Concrete. I don't know if you have any other questions for me, but we are improving that, that road and then extending that sidewalk from the property up to the north towards there, we're adding the sidewalk area, adding a fire hydrant along there, and improving some of the landscaping. Some of these pictures are pretty old, that's from the previous owner of all that storage and stuff that's there.
Yeah. So they keep talking about the size of your building, so I'm just curious, how much bigger is, how big is the building? How many square feet are you adding?
It's, it's fifty by a hundred and twenty-five.
Oh, okay.
So it, you know, singles.
Sixty-five hundred square feet roughly?
Yeah.
Okay. What are you laughing at, Jacob?
It's just like some buildings, some buildings are, you know, large at sixty-five hundred square feet, but like just in comparison with.
A warehouse, that's not that big.
Yeah. That's all that I'm laughing about.
Right. I'm just laughing because when you said substantial and large, I, I expected something more like twenty thousand square feet.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other questions for Mr. Hampton? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, if there's any of the public that would like to come up and comment on this proposal. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back up here to the commissioners, is there any other discussion that you need or are you ready to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion. I move the Planning Commission approve the request for Tyler Hampton for the proposal site plan on the property located approximately 800 South of Main Street on a property zone manufacturing, distribution, and adopt the exhibits and conditions and the finding of the staff report as modified by any conditions below by the planning or engineering and fire departments requirements are all met.
Okay, I have a proposal by Commissioner Clyde, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fugel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that also passes. Positive recommendation. Okay, we will move on to our next, and that is a code text amendment, section ten dash eighteen dash two dash B, citywide. Public hearing to consider the request of St. John Properties to amend the city code ten dash eighteen dash two dash B parking design standards by modifying the depth requirement for parking stalls within the Grove Commercial Sales District. Mr. Hawkins?
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This code text application is to reduce the parking stall length requirement of head-to-head stalls in the Grove Commercial Sales Zone from twenty feet to eighteen feet. So here's an. So here's an aerial image of the entire Grove Zone area. So the Grove Interchange District is this section down here. And the applicant is proposing to add the Grove Commercial District, which is all of this up here and a little bit over here as well into the requirement where only 18-foot parking stalls are required for head-to-head. As, as the zoning ordinances are currently written, all parking spaces shall be nine feet by 20 feet long, except that in the Grove Interchange Zone, parking spaces may be nine feet wide by 18 feet long. The main purpose, why the longer parking stalls are found throughout the city is to accommodate larger vehicles. Where there are few vehicles that are larger than 18 feet, our ordinances are situated to where there's always enough room to park any type of passenger vehicle and still have room for emergency vehicles in the drive aisle. One second.
We all have them.
Here we are. I just drew up this visual earlier today to kind of help with some visualization. This way, some of the parking stalls may be reduced to 18 feet deep as the vehicle overhang extends into the curb or landscape planter. So for example, these ones are okay to be nine by 18 because if an oversized vehicle parks there, they can go over into the sidewalk, and same over here with like the landscape planter, they can go against that. But here, on these head-to-head ones, there's no room for them to extend over and therefore all of that overhang, if there are large parked cars, they would end up going into the drive aisle. And the drive aisle is important to have completely free and clear for those emergency vehicles. Let's see here, so there are some opportunities for reducing the stall length, such as allowing developers to meet any additional landscaping, drive aisle size, or number of parking stall requirements. And that allows more flexibility on the developer's side of things. However, as mentioned before, the weaknesses of having reduced parking dimensions appear to be stronger than the opportunities. So staff recommends denial of the text amendment as it's proposed. Alternatively, should the planning commission consider approval of an alternative approach, staff would recommend approval of the reduction in size for parking stalls that exceed what would be required for a commercial business. So for example, if a commercial business requires 40 parking stalls and they've provided 50, then those extra 10 could be that lesser requirement of 18 feet deep. And then that way, we know that having all of these parking stalls, you know, all of those are accounted for, the drive aisles will be accounted for, and those should be, that should be fine. But yeah, I can take any questions, if you'd like clarification on anything as well.
Is the 26 feet based off the back of the line to the back of the line, then?
Yes, sir.
So if you go down to 18 feet theoretically, that, in this scenario of how this would be, that would drop that to 24?
Yeah, so in this case, if this is 18 feet and then this drive aisle is 26 foot, and then these are 18 feet, or 20 feet as well, then that reduction of two feet would make this a 28-foot.
Oh, so it doesn't go the other direction?
So it does, it doesn't go the other direction, but from a planning perspective, often what I see in some of the very preliminary drawings is most will have a 24-foot aisle here instead of a 26. And so that's often a comment that comes up from the fire department is that we need access from the road all the way around and back out. That all needs to be 26 feet wide. And by, sometimes that ends up posing a little bit of a problem for the developers because sometimes we'll have 18-foot, 24-foot, 18, 18, 24, 18. And so they have to remove like an entire section of parking in order for them to meet that 26, that's extra four feet of parking. And so that's what I mean by it provides more opportunity for developers to meet what is required by our zoning ordinances if those were reduced. Because instead of it being 20, then they would still meet their whole.
So it still comes back to the same balance of
Right.
Building versus parking lot versus how much asphalt we put down.
Right, exactly that, yeah.
Okay. Aaron, you kept raising your hand, or did that get answered?
I think it got answered quite well.
I'm really curious to hear what Marty has to say.
Sure thing.
Before he comes up, under staff's recommended proposal here, under their recommended amendment, is there not still a concern that in the area, like if the, if the driveways were to taper and were down to 18-foot stalls all the way across, there would still be the, the problem of somebody pulling in a truck there and encroaching on that 26 feet, wouldn't there? I mean, I, I get the idea that there's other parking available that those larger vehicles could go to, but it doesn't, it's not as if it eliminates that risk of.
Right, it doesn't eliminate that risk, but it does reduce it some. In the staff report, you'll see that some of the vehicles that I have mentioned there, like a Ford F-350, like supercharged, real big truck, you know, stuff that you'd find down in Texas most of the time. Those are about 22 feet.
I know you came from Texas, Jacob, but there's a lot of.
There's a lot of them here.
Are there, okay, good to know. But yeah, tho, those are 22 feet and these are 20 feet already. So if one of those were to park right there already, they would be extending over some. Whereas if it was 18 feet, that's a larger hangover, especially if they parked back-to-back. You know, like if one really long one parked here, another one right there, which would be tough. But you know, if that happened, it would really limit how much room that they have in the drive aisle.
I mean, some of the issues that we talk about when, when some of these buildings come in, these like condos and townhomes and stuff like that, that mainly, I guess, the townhomes. The gar, the garages are so small that the vehicles don't sit inside them. And, and so we talk about this and then, and then we have a problem with parking outside. Right, because they don't fit it, they don't fit in either, so.
Exactly that, yeah.
Todd, you're going to say something?
No, I, I just, I mean, looking at your list too, I mean, if you took even like the most popular pickup in America right now, which I still think is the F-150 and a, and a super cab, you have a regular cab listed here, but it super cab with a six-and-a-half-foot bed, you're probably still.
Mine's 20.
Right, yeah.
Those are 20 feet, that's, that's the standard pickup. So, and, and there's a lot of those around. In Pleasant Grove.
Suburban, Escalade, I mean, yeah.
So I mean, there's still, I, I mean, I appreciate the list that you did here, but I do think it understates the amount of larger vehicles that are driven in Pleasant Grove.
Sure, absolutely. So, yeah, I was just kind of gathering information on what common types would be, not necessarily which one is the most common here in Pleasant Grove. And, you know, actually funny that you should mention that, from my research, I believe I did find that the F-150 was the most common car in Utah. So I definitely believe you when you say that that's a big thing around here, so.
And they're all 20 feet long.
That's what I have.
Yeah, that's what I drive too.
I think that's what Marty drives too.
I'll let the applicant answer that question.
You're badgered up now.
Any other questions for Jacob? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, we'd like to invite the applicant up. It's an old hat for you, but state your name.
Commissioners, good to be with you again, Marty Beaumont, St. John's Properties. So, this is an interesting topic. So if it's such a problem for fire, then why does all the other cities allow it? If it really is a fire access issue, they wouldn't allow it. It's not a fire access issue, and the reason why is because it's, the percentage of bigger trucks that need to use those is very small compared to the overall commuter trucks in general. Even though there are a lot on the, on the road, they aren't typically parking 10 trucks in a row right next to each other, across from each other. Can you show that picture that I, I sent you, would that be possible? Did you send it to me either? Yeah. Sorry about that. So, so that would be a question that I'd have is, I don't, I don't, even though, yes, it's a 26-foot wide fire access road, you have a F-350 that's 23-foot long or 22-and-a-half-foot long that, that parks in there, that's encroaching into that, so why don't we make them 22-foot long? Instead of 20 feet long, well, it's just because of the law of averages, right, it's, it's not impacting that many. We changed it in the interchange sub-district back in 2017. Kind of understanding that a lot, I mean, there is the occasional, I drive a truck, you drive a truck, we all deal with parking stalls and, and everybody kind of learns how to maneuver into those. The 24-foot drive aisle is set, I think in every community, the 26 for fire access is set. The 18-foot stall is something that you work around. This is an example really quick of DoTERRA, so back in 2019, I just took Google Earth, looked at it, front parking DoTERRA, okay, commercial sales zone. There's 269 stalls in front of their building. Right at this point of the day, it was 80% full, okay, 215 vehicles. Out of that 215, there were 12 trucks that would probably classify as being extra long as far as being out of that stall. That's very common and typical in a commercial area is that you aren't typically seeing, you know, this isn't the rodeo grounds where you might get a bunch of trucks coming to the rodeo and they're all parking together. This is a commercial zone, and so in this scenario, you have a very small percentage of the vehicles, so it has very little impact on the overall maneuverability of all the other cars. If you look at this, all of these cars, you, you can see all the excess space that's, that is there, right? It's available. And that still happens regardless if you have 20-foot stalls or 18-foot stalls. Those cars, a lot of the compact cars don't even fill the 18-foot space, and that space is available for others to use as they, as needing to get through the, the parking lots. I, I think our argument would be that it's very common to, to allow a nine-by-18 stall. It's not unreasonable to maneuver most typical vehicles. You'll notice that most of the trucks that I counted there, a lot of them are kind of along the outer boundaries where they can overhang. They typically get to the border, so one of the problems with, I think, what the staff is recommending is you will find a, probably a nightmare in trying to manage how you calculate the number of stalls that are allowed to go if, if it's the number that's overless. So for example, we, we build our retail buildings at about seven stalls per thousand. City code does not require that many, so we're going to have a number of excess stalls. We overpark our retail because that's what, that's what's required by the industry. So from what I understood, what staff is proposing, you would look at, let's say that we have 40 stall, or 50 stalls, we're only required to do 40, so 10 of those stalls could be lesser than 20-foot. And then you would have to figure out, well, these stalls already can be 18 feet because they're up against a planter. These stalls can all be 18 feet, so which stalls, the only stalls that we would be allowed to do is five of those stalls would be able to do, you know, 18-foot stalls on those head-to-head stalls, all the rest of the stalls are already there. It's just, it'd be a headache to manage as well from a staffing standpoint, that's my opinion. I don't want to have to have those arguments every time we come in and say, no, we counted these four as 18-foot stalls and we, these other ones are 18, but we didn't count those because they're allowed. It's, it's just, is it worth the headache? My opinion is no. I don't feel that, that, that it's a big enough issue, again, it's allowed in many other cities to just do the 18-foot stalls. And it hasn't created, you know, we have them down there, we don't get comments or complaints or issues or more accidents or fire access issues or complaints from the fire department that we only have 18-foot stalls, you know, that's, those are probably non-issues and just creating a, a more difficult. Really, I think what it does honestly is that it allows for a little bit more space to, to be able to create, whether it's more square footage of a building or more landscaped area or a wider sidewalk, a lot of those things are what you're trying to negotiate when you can minimize that, it lessens the amount of drainage and impervious area on a site as well. You can get a little bit smaller parking lots and lessen a little bit of the amount of drainage and, and things that you have to deal with on that, so. That's, that's my pitch, I guess, to you, is I, I feel like that it's not an issue, it's very common, it works. And I don't know that there's enough reasons not to just move it to the 18-foot stalls throughout and not just do specifically what staff's recommending.
Why do you, why do you guys specifically want to change this one? Because in all the other buildings and all the other stuff that St. John's has done before you went to work for them, this has never been an issue. So why is it specifically now?
St. John's Properties doesn't own a lot of property in the.
In this, in this.
They're in the interchange and they did change it seven, in 2017, and we agreed with that at the time in the interchange sub-district. A lot of the thought behind that was due to the amount of commuter traffic that you typically see in that area. Like the DoTERRAs, you go count cars in DoTERRA, very, very, very small percentage of trucks in all of their parking, yet they were required to do 20-foot stalls throughout. So is that, could they have done something different? Could they have lessened some of the impacts, maybe more landscaping, those types of things, yes. Those, those do impact the developer. I think for us now, as we're looking at it, we're just saying, we have one, we can make it work either way. That is, retail J&amp;K has been before you as 20-foot stalls. We came last month to do that. However, if we have the 18-foot stalls, it gives us a little bit more flexibility on the landscape area on the frontage. And so to us, it's just a matter of, do we really want more asphalt? Do we really want more, you know, kind of confined? It, it really limits us a little bit on, on the parking area, the driving aisles, it just.
For somebody that, that drives a big truck, though, I need that little car parked behind me so I can back out. Or pull in.
The good thing is, is that a lot of times, and I dr, I drive the same truck, you know, and you, you, sometimes it's a little bit tight and you have to navigate that, and sometimes I'm glad it's me driving and not my wife. You know, she, she doesn't navigate things as well as, as I do, but.
Is she watching?
Saying that for all women, I'm just saying for my wife. And she would agree with me that sometimes it's a little difficult for her. But at the same time, it's this very small percentage of the traveling public that we're imposing a very impactful ordinance or requirement.
I, I don't have any statistics on that, but I don't know if that's necessarily true. Maybe you can show this case at DoTERRA, which is a specific kind of business, right? You could do the opposite argument at Home Depot.
I don't think DoTERRA was your best place to find trucks.
I couldn't do it in the interchange sub-district because that's already 18 in what we've built, and so that was kind of a, but I would happy to do that because I did look out my window, I do every day. I know people that are coming to those businesses. Yes, they get the occasional truck that comes through, there's no question that they're there and, and there. But are, is it, is it unnavigable? Is it creating more damages? Is it a public or safety issue? Is it creating problems for the fire department or emergency services? My response would be no. We haven't heard a complaint and we haven't necessarily dealt with an emergency services issue or health, safety, welfare issue from the city's standpoint, so why do we have the requirement? That's above a typical requirement in any other city.
I don't want to make a generalization about truck drivers because I have one as well, but I, where you say that, you know, if you have a longer truck and they, if it, if it won't fit in that space and you make other modifications, I haven't seen that to be true with most truck drivers, I feel like they take up the space they need to take up. Again, not to make a generalization, but I don't think it's normally, oh, I have a bigger vehicle, I should go, I don't see that most of the time.
I always just find the furthest away parking stall and walk.
You're more responsible.
It's because you can't navigate very well, that's why.
Me and my wife have problems navigating, obviously. But, but nonetheless, that's, that's true, I think that some do try to fit in and they make it work and, but is, you know, have you heard a report that there's a lot more, you know, problems from that? And we have it in the interchange sub-district and it's been down there. It's tight, I agree, there are, but is it, is it necessary to impose that additional footage on all of the parking lots for a little issue?
I mean, if we're going anecdotally, which I believe this is kind of getting anecdotal, when I pull into the R&amp;R, find my walk, parking lot and my truck, it is difficult. And I think it does create something, a somewhat of an issue. And so I don't think you're hearing those complaints because people do navigate it and then they deal with it. I don't know that that necessarily means that we should just adopt 18 feet across the board because it is more comfortable to be in those other areas where the 20 feet is. And I'm really hesitant to say, to make any assumptions based on what our fire department is saying here in the city is they want 26 feet, they have a reason for that. I'm not going to go in with any kind of, not expertise. That's what Daniel, or that's what Jacob just told us today, is that they've asked for 26 feet.
No, I mean, have they opposed the. No, I mean, have they opposed the proposal to reduce it to eighteen? Or is it just, because the fire code is a fire code, right?
It looks like, it looks like Aaron has a comment there.
Yeah, I think, I, I think I could just clear that up. The, so the, the fire department, they don't, they don't necessarily care about the stall length. They just care about the width between the stalls. They want there to be a minimum of twenty-six feet between stalls. So, I mean, we could, I mean, obviously we don't have the fire department here, so we don't know if they have a preference that way, but they want there to be a full twenty-six between, between stalls, whatever the, the stall length is.
It meets fire code, regardless if it's.
And it doesn't even have to be every, like, if, if you've got multiple loops like this, they really only want the, the one closest to the building. So you know, the one, instead of a DoTERRA building on the right, only the one on the right, the, the ones in the middle all are going to be like twenty-four feet.
Yeah.
And that's, that meets our standard, our actual standard, the city's standard is twenty-four feet width between stalls. But the, but anytime it's a fire access, the, the fire department requires it to be twenty-six.
Okay.
In Texas, what, what are the, what, what length?
Seven, seven hundred and fifty feet, Marty.
Seriously.
I was gonna say, because, uh, you know, I, I love Costco because I can get my truck in and out of there anytime. Because that's, they're huge, but.
So are the carts.
Yeah.
Questions?
No, that was a good presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Okay, this is a public hearing. If any of the public would like to comment on this proposal before us on the parking stalls, please come forward, state your name for the record.
It's not a hot topic.
Nope, it's not a hot topic. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back up here to the commissioners. Is there any other discussion that you'd like to have? Or is someone ready to make a motion on, uh, this topic?
I'm, I'm wavering in between the two. I, I think he's right that it would create an administrative burden with staff's recommendation and create future problems, but then that makes me say then let's not change it. Because I, I don't know that I feel great about going to eighteen feet.
I agree with that.
Go for it, make a motion, see what, see what happens.
See what happens, well, if we don't want to discuss it, then yeah, I'll make a motion.
It seems like we agree, I think that's what he means.
Yeah, I, I moved the planning commission and denied the request of St. John's properties for the proposed amendments to city code section ten dash eight dash two dash B, parking design standards by adding the Grove Commercial Sales District to the list of approved zones where reduced parking dimensions are permitted based upon the file, the following findings that the, the parking requirements currently are, are set for a purpose for the type of vehicle that's driven around Pleasant Grove and I don't think the reduction is necessary.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Fugel.
Well, I, I just wanted to, um, I, I believe we are recommending denial, not denying the motion, right? This would go to the city council regardless.
There you go, sorry, I, I moved it.
Modify the motion, it, it's.
Yeah, modify the motion that it.
To re- recommend denial.
Recommend the denial, yep, to the city council.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Fugel, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hargit. Are those in favor of deny, uh, sending a negative proposal to the city council? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That denial will be sent to the city council for them to review and, uh.
So you didn't also approve staff's recommendation?
No.
Nope.
Thanks for giving it back.
That's the, that's the laser.
Taking your pen.
Listen, in four years, that's the first time I've seen St. John's be denied on anything.
Oh geez, I, I don't know about that.
Okay, the next four, next three, excuse me, three will be heard together in, in one, uh, joint and it will be a public hearing for preliminary subdivision plat located at three sixty E South, one hundred East, Stringtown Neighborhood. And I do want to combine all those.
Yes, sir.
So then also be a conditional use permit for located at three hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred east and a public hearing. So it's a public hearing to consider the request of Mustang Design for a one-lot preliminary subdivision plat called Jared's Place Subdivision Plat A on zero point four three six acres of land located at three hundred and sixty South, one hundred East in the downtown Village Commercial Zone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so lastly, this is the subdivision plat, a conditional use permit and a site plan for a mixed-use building for Mustang Development. Uh, starting off with the zoning map, uh, this property is located in the downtown commercial subdivision. Uh, this is actually just south of us at three sixty east, uh, yeah, three sixty South, one hundred east. Um, just south of here is the Purple Turtle, um, which I can probably bring up the map if you want to see, uh, more of the surrounding area. Uh, in fact, I think this is next to that, uh, heating and the fireplace, uh, building that's just right over there. Um, in any case, uh, the applicant is doing a one-lot subdivision and this one is pretty straightforward. Um, the main thing about this one is that this southern property line is right up against that building that is just adjacent to the south. Uh, so kind of going back here, that's right up adjacent to that building. Um, and staff has discussed with the applicant, um, there are like some stairs and some utilities there as well. Those stairs will be removed and the fire access or, um, extra door on the second floor there will also be removed and so it will be one solid brick wall, uh, all the way up and down, uh, for that adjacent building. And then that way it can meet the fire, uh, fire regulations for the building. And then, uh, the, I'll get into it a little bit more, but the proposed, um, building, uh, that goes on this property, they have windows that are facing the south and so that's why there's this little five-foot access and utility easement right there. Um, other than that, um, the setbacks are zero feet on the sides for commercial buildings, ten feet, uh, I believe it's ten feet for the, uh, front property line and zero feet for the rear property line as well. And so ultimately, um, the proposed subdivision meets all the zoning requirements for, uh, subdivisions and plats. Um, moving on to the conditional use permit, uh, the zoning ordinances permit mixed-use commercial buildings with the condition that three residents, that three residence units are permitted for every one thousand square feet of commercial or retail space. Uh, the proposed building has twenty-three eighty square feet of retail space, so doing the math, that allows them to have seven residential units, um, and that's what they have. Uh, and then finally, the site plan, um, here we have, uh, the building itself and you can see the setbacks here, ten foot on the side or on the front and then they have a five foot on the side here, uh, where you can see how it goes up right against that adjacent building. Um, and, uh, there's the rear. They have, um, the parking requirements for this building is two parking spaces for each residential unit. Uh, at seven units, that's fourteen parking spaces. And then at twenty-three eighty square feet for the retail, that will be five parking spaces because retail is one parking space for every five hundred square feet. Um, in all, they need nineteen parking spaces and they have twenty-one. Um, you can't really see all twenty-one right here on the north side of the property and that is because, let me to move forward a little bit. Here on the floor plans, you can see that there's a one-car garage on each of these five residential units here and then the last two residential units go over the, uh, commercial building that you can see here. So, um, so we can come back to that if you would like. Uh, in the meantime, though, um, we talked about the site plan a little bit. Here's the landscaping plan, so the front yard will be landscaped, the rear yard will have landscaping as well, as well as the parking area. Um, they meet the landscaping requirements, they have enough trees for all of that and, uh, they have the parking strip in the drive, in the parking area, so, uh, that absolutely, uh, works as well. Uh, and then here are the elevation plans for the, uh, building as well. Now, this property, uh, this project has gone to the design review board where they, where they reviewed this and, uh, they were happy with the way how this meets the turn-of-the-twentieth-century design. Uh, there were a couple revisions that had to be made and this was the final one. Um, but ultimately it has a, um, this would be like the storefront essentially. Uh, so it looks like that. And then, um, this top side, this is the side that faces that adjacent building where it has all those windows, uh, that are facing, um, that side. So that's why there needed to be access along that side of the property. Um, lastly, here are the materials for the building. This elevation plan was one of the prior ones where it had less brick. Um, but the materials are all still the same, even though the elevation plans are different. Um, so you'll have a fair amount of brick. Um, so this entire front, like the east elevation, that is entirely brick, as you saw on the previous version. Um, then there's some stucco that you can see back here, all of that will be stucco. And then they have, uh, different trim colors as well. Um, but ultimately it meets the design guidelines and it was approved by the desig- design review board. Um, and that is pretty much it, I can take any questions.
With the windows on that back, what is the width of that alleyway and for fire egress?
Five and a half feet.
Five and a half feet?
So it's interesting, um, uh, Jim, I know you're, I'm not, I know what you're, maybe I know what you're thinking. And I came across this too, I, I, we were in a meeting a while ago on the commercial and when we changed it to a zero setback. And the reason that we went to the zero setback is because the police and fire department hated this.
Yeah, right.
Um, because they felt like it was a, it was a, a place that was hard to take care of.
To get through.
Yep, and, um, uh. They didn't like it and I'm just curious if you've gone through this, this doesn't have.
We have.
One thing for a decision with us, what did they say about that?
Uh, the design review board, um, so originally.
This would have been fire and.
Yeah, fire and police.
This would have been fire and the police that hated it.
That's just a.
Oh, I see.
The fire department wa- recommended we go to a zero because what they didn't like was down in some of our heavy, heavy, heavier commercial areas, they were pulling it off. Now, I do know, you know, when you look at the elevations, they've got a pitched roof there, they've got to be able to catch that water. You're not going to stick the, I mean, the other building's already on the property line.
Yeah, you could have a pretty serious water issue between those buildings.
Waterway.
So.
Did any of this stuff come up?
Um, not for the pitched roof, um, the setbacks did come up in the design review board uh, because originally, uh, on the plat, um, actually, let's go here to the site plan. Um, this dotted line right here, uh, that used to be where the proposed property line was. And when that was brought to the design review board first, one of the members was an architect and he noticed that there were the windows on that south side and he said, uh, no, that has to be entirely brick or you have to move that property line some. And so the applicant, since they own both this property and the property just south of them, they moved that property line, uh, five feet over so they could have that access.
Mm-hmm, so those windows would just look five feet back into the other building, at least the bottom ones.
Mm-hmm.
Add some light.
Um, yeah.
And now you said you're removing the stairs from the other building, does that change the egress on that existing building? Does that cause any fire department egress problems with that building by modifying that escape? Um, by removing that escape, I don't believe it does, uh, have any negative impact for the adjacent building. So, I mean, those are there for a reason and that's why I ask if you don't have proper egress on the existing building, it's, causes an issue. And I'll let the applicant explain that a little bit more, um, but that, uh, egress, um, from that adjacent building, that entire side is already brick as well, uh, and so by having it all as, uh, you know, brick, that should help with the fire department's safety, uh, regulations and such. With that small of an alleyway, do they have to have fire-rated glass or?
I mean, that would be up to the.
Yeah, but I've, I've had quite a lot of fire-rated glass in commercial buildings when they were of that proximity and I don't know if that meets that criteria or not. Right.
Yeah, but the building department handled that, right?
Yeah, they do, just. And I did bring this in front of our building, um, safety.
I mean, it's interesting, I like it, I mean, I like the, the uniqueness, it's the one that's being framed up right now, but.
Mm-hmm.
What is that, is that two hundred or, uh, three hundred south and it's really close to this. Um, they're framing it now, it's got three units in it and then it has that, uh, drive-through building. What's that on?
I believe it's on three hundred.
Three hundred.
Right here.
Three hundred south and, yeah, that lot right there that they're framing up. I remember when that one came through. And this is kind of a similar situation where they're putting some retail into it. Definitely creative.
Almost the same neighborhood.
Creative, it's a tight lot, it's just.
Yeah, it's just barely down from it.
Yeah, half a block.
Yeah.
It's right there. There's just a house between them.
Yep.
Hmm.
And then that's the Purple Turtle parking lot right down at the bottom.
Anyway. I don't, I don't have any other questions for Jacob unless anybody else does.
Okay, thank you, Jacob. Okay, thank you. Okay, if the applicant was here, we'd like to invite them to come up. State both of your names for the record, please.
I'm Parker Johnson, I'm the project designer here and this is.
I'm Larry Lindstrom, I'm the, I'm the builder and developer and also the uncle of the guy who owns the place. So, and I also helped build the original building there, so I think I can answer all your questions.
Yeah, so one of the questions you had was on the stairs and I believe, um, there was an office in that building, right, that was separate from the main, uh, business, but it's not there anymore and so they still have access to that office that was there from the rest of the building.
You're familiar with pine floor covering probably.
Yeah.
Uh, Jeff Pine, uh, my brother originally built this, uh, building and Jeff Pine, when he started his carpet business, he used the upstairs and we put a separate, we put those stairs there so he could, uh, sell carpet upstairs. And then, of course, when he moved that, those stairs never, are never used anymore, so, uh, they're not required there for fire or anything. They were putting there as a convenience just so they could, uh, rent the upstairs at the time.
Okay. Um, any questions for the applicants?
I mean, just, just to get your thoughts on that, that five-foot alleyway.
Well, when we did this and with the, with the lane and everything, the fire department's already been over the whole thing and, and they, they were, you know, it meets all the codes and everything and so there's no problem with code issues, but they did require us to sprinkle the building and actually we could have, uh, you know, the way the codes reading stuff, we could get by without sprinkling the building, but the fire marshal, uh, just because of, you know, just because of the way it was laid out, he, uh, he required it to, to be sprinkled. So we did go with a sprinkling system just to mitigate any problems. It really, it still meets code, but they, and instead of, uh, instead of arguing or fighting with the fire marshal, we just agreed to put a sprinkling system in it.
Does that eliminate like doing a parapet wall or something like that from a fire jumping over by putting that in?
What's that again?
So like you've got a, this pitched roof like this, right?
Not now, no, we, we went with a, we're gonna, we're gonna drain the whole building off the back and that way we can control our water a lot easier because our, our, uh, our detention or, our detention's in the back and so that gives us an opportunity to do whatever we want with the, with the water, either gutter it down or, or get it to the back of the property without running it out. That way we don't have any water running on the sidewalks and stuff for the winter.
Yeah.
And so we, it's a lot better system, so when the plat, when they made us, they didn't like our pitched roof design first because they said it didn't look like a downtown thing.
Sure.
And so when we, when we put the parapet, if we would have did a pitched roof, we would have had to put that parapet like eight or ten or twelve feet tall and instead of doing that, we decided to just do a direct slope and pitch it one way and that way we could, uh, we could do a smaller pitch, we could go ahead and make it look a lot more attractive.
Right into a freeze zone, right to where, where sun will never hit it, no freeze down in there.
Well, we got, we have a lot of options there.
Yeah.
So when you say off the back, it's the west end of the.
Correct, we have underground detention in the, um.
Parking lot?
Parking, or no, in the yard area actually, under the landscaping.
Yeah, and the play yard is what it looked like.
Yeah, so essentially the water can go down, infiltrate into the ground, into that detention, um, structure and that meets the LID code and everything, so.
This should be really attractive, my, you're familiar with my building, Grove Crest Villas down there and the two buildings I'm doing on the front on Center Street, we're just finishing the one right now. And we're, uh, we're gonna, we're doing to get the same look there that we put on Center Street. And so it's going to be real, you know, we kind of like to landscape nice, we like to make them pe- they place. And so it's gonna be real, you know, we kind of like to landscape nice, we like to make them, p- the places look really nice, so that's kind of what the idea is here.
Have you considered any lighting in that five foot alleyway? I, I just, I mean, if we go back to like a, it could be like a nuisance area type deal as well with there being such a, a small skinny five foot alleyway, it's gonna be hard to keep up. It's gonna be, um, I mean, there's gonna be stuff in there. But if you, I mean, light deters some of that, have you thought about putting any lighting in there?
No, I haven't given that much thought. If, if we think it needs it, it wouldn't be that big of a deal. Your, your second story's actually gonna be a little bit above the, it's gonna, your second story windows are actually gonna look over the top of the building there on the, on the sheet metal shop. But it'll be a really attractive building. It's gonna, you know, we tried everything we try and do, we try and make them really nice.
Yeah.
And that's kind of.
I definitely think you've been very creative with the project. There's no doubt about it.
Well, when I did my last one, I says, you know, I just, we want it to look kind of like Disneyland Downtown Main Street, you know? But we want everything we want to do, we want it to, you know, we'll spend a little bit more money just to make things attractive. We don't try and cut every corner.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant on this?
Well, we're excited to get going. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, this is a public hearing. So if any of you ought to come up and, uh, have any comments, please come up, state your name for the record, and we'd be glad to hear what you have to say.
Hello, uh, my name's Carlos Valorio, and my wife is, oh, right here. I didn't think she was gonna get up. Um, and we live to the property right to the north.
Right between them, right?
What's that?
Right between these two.
Right in between. So we were just here a few months ago, or not sure how long it was, it may be a year ago or something. Um, and the only question we have is, uh, so the, it looks like the parking lot to the, will be set up to the north of our property. And we're just curious, there's a, a lot of trees separating currently the property lines. We're just curious, we would like a fence of some sort or something there? We're not sure, I'm not sure how to read thi- this, but you know, that's our backyard there where the parking lot's gonna be facing the north side. We're just curious on what the plan for that is.
So with what they've presented to us, we wouldn't necessarily have that unless you've heard any comments, Jacob?
Um, yeah, so if you look at the plans right here, each of those little circles up there are bushes and trees.
Okay.
It's just not specifying a fence, that was the question.
Right. For the fence, I haven't seen any, uh, indication just yet about there being a fence. But, um, we can absolutely work with the applicant on, um, having a fence there.
That's just something we would prefer. If it's gonna be a commercial thing, there's gonna be a lot of different people. We have kids, and our downstairs tenants have kids too. That's kind of something that we would want to make sure that that's.
Separated, yeah. I know that on the, on the other side, um, Cynthia Cook or whatever, she's building a, a fence there because there was a drive-through there on that side too. And so, you know, now that there's gonna be cars on that side too, it'd be nice to, for our backyard to.
What I recall is we were concerned about the light shining right into your house through the drive-through.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
So we've worked that out, and that's been great. So we would just like to make sure that we have some sort of privacy with the commercial.
I think one of the best things in this situation is the applicant sitting right there is to end up talking to them about it. I'm sure they would be willing to work something out in some way.
Okay, yeah, we just, yeah, we saw it and we didn't know much about it, so this was super helpful to be able to see the images and.
Yeah, we're excited. I think it'll look really nice. So we're excited for there to be something really nice there. We just want to make sure that we.
Sure.
That you keep your, your section of privacy in.
Yeah. Of our backyard, so. Thank you guys.
Perfect, thanks you guys.
Okay. Any other comments from the public on this, at this time? Okay, we will close the public hearing at this point, bring it back up here to the commissions to, uh, discuss and.
So we've got. Okay, this is five, six, and seven. Subdivision plat, conditional use permit, and a site plan.
Any discussions? Or someone ready for a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion on item five. I move the planning commission forward a positive recommendation of approval for the request of Mustang development for a subdivision plat called Jared's Place subdivision plat A on property located at approximately three sixty South One Hundred East on property zones downtown village commercial and adopting the exhibits, conditions, and findings of the staff report, uh, with the conditions that all final planning, engineering, and fire department requirements are met.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Still, a second from Commissioner Clyde on number five of the public hearing. All those in accordance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, section five passes. I'd be willing to hear a motion on section six, which is the conditional use permit. Is there any discussion needs to happen on that, or are we ready for a motion there?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move the planning commission forward a positive recommendation of approval for the request of Mustang development for a conditional use permit to allow a mixed use building on property zone downtown village commercial located at approximately three sixty east, three sixty South One Hundred East and adopting the exhibits, conditions, and findings of the staff report. And as modified by the conditions below, the all final planning, engineering, and fire department requirements are met.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Hargit.
Sorry, real quick, on, on a conditional use permit, are we not, uh, just approving that? That doesn't go to another level, right? Um, okay, yeah, Karen, no, it says no. No? Yeah, so, and, and that's gonna be the same on number seven, just FYI. So if we could modify the motion just to approve it rather than forward a recommendation of approval?
Okay, I move that the planning commission approves the conditional use permit. Do we need to reread the whole thing?
No.
Okay. Thanks, Karen.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Hargit, a second by Commissioner Still. All those in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number six passes. Just move to number seven. Is there any further discussion needed for number seven, or will we hear another proposal?
Nope, I'll do it. I move the planning commission recommend, or same problem here, yeah. I move the planning commission approve, um, for the request of the Mustang development for the commercial site plan for a mixed use building property located approximately three sixty South One Hundred East on property zone downtown village commercial and adopt all the exhibits, conditions, and findings by the staff report and modified by any conditions below of all final planning, engineering, and fire departments are all met, requirements are met.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Clyde, second from Commissioner Fugel. All those in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Okay, at this point, we need to approve the, uh, review of the minutes from November tenth meeting and November seventeenth meetings. Anyone would like to, uh, approve those?
Are, are the November twenty-eighth meetings, meeting minutes involved in this too, right? So there's three, three sets of minutes.
Some of them were so short.
That we just don't need to worry about it. I, I would make a motion to approve the, the minutes from the November tenth, November seventeenth, and November twenty-eighth meetings.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fugel, a second by Commissioner Clyde. All those in a, in agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is passed. At this point, business is done. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will do that since it's my last meeting. Make a motion to adjourn.
So done. We are adjourned.